Time for the one minute warning. Good evening. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Enfield Board of Selectmen for March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The first item on our agenda is to introduce and welcome new members. To my right, Al. The young. Let's give them a good welcome here. And next up is the organization of the board, and we need to elect a chairman for the coming year. The tradition has been that that individual who will be up for reelection will be the chairman. Katie, how do you feel?
If called his serve, I will do it.
Yeah, one thing you need to think about now, though, is there's.
It'll be me and Alice.
And Alice.
Yep.
I am happy to defer based on length of experience.
We may want to. I think you're right. Yeah, that's right. So this this has been a tradition, but I don't know how far back it goes, not that far, probably.
I think it's in my view. I think it's a good tradition. I think we should continue it with Kate as the chair for the next year. But we definitely need to talk about how it's going to work with five and three, five board members and three firms. But I don't think we need to make that decision tonight is my personal view.
I also, you know, if somebody felt like they would really want to be chair, I would not be. Yeah. I will do it, you know. But you don't get to be hired.
You can stop at any time then.
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to nominate Kate Stewart as the chair of the Enfield Board.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna go.
Okay. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes of March sixth and February twenty-first, non-public.
We have much more.
Well, March sixth, regular.
Organization to do. We have a lot more organization.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
No.
Could I make one? I just want to ask before we move down this organization chart. I think it's a very good one now that we have five people. I wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate to add a vice chair to this. Is that something that we're able to do?
I would recommend that.
Okay, so I'll add that in. So at this time, I will take a motion to nominate a vice chair. I'll speak at one.
I will nominate Eric.
Is there a second?
Your second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Eric?
I'll stand.
Okay, but you will accept the position. Okay.
So Eric accept.
There we go.
So moving on to budget committee, in the past, we've kind of talked about who's enjoyed what role and what they're interested in. So I think instead of just doing it from nomination format, we've kind of had a discussion and everyone's comfortable with that more informal format and talking about what they're interested in. We we have the either privilege or challenge of having two people who have passed budget committee like last year's, and every one of us, I think, has been on the budget committee at one point or another. So is there anybody who John was our budget committee ex officio this past year? Tracy's been on. I know Eric's been on. I've been on. So I think everybody has shown some interest. As I don't know if John feels strongly about continuing or somebody.
I would like to continue as a matter of fact. Yes.
Is does anybody else feel strongly they want it or because we have plenty of other opportunities?
No, I'll, in fact, I don't know whether I should give this to you. This is my resignation from the budget committee. As an elected member, I have to resign according to state law. But my plan is to attend all the meetings.
And it can't hurt to have more than one senator.
Yeah.
Just interests me as a topic, so I'll sit in one of those chairs.
And we've done that in the past when someone couldn't make it. If we needed somebody as a resource, had someone go. And I think, you know, we have good open communication about that. So I think it's a really great opportunity to be there as a resource.
Yeah, absolutely. Makes sense.
I like it. All right. Capital Improvement Program, that's CIP. Again, many of us have served. So Tracy, you're currently on CIP right now. And.
I'd like to. We have not had an ex officio to CIP.
You had me last year.
Did we have you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, I crop up, so you never know where I'm gonna be.
You want to do it again?
No. Look, I'm getting good at this. Why say no? No, I think there's plenty of other things to draw my attention to. But Eric, are you interested as well or?
Well, my my personal interest would be more on the planning side, planning board side. And I do have a suggestion. I think we should ask Tracy to continue serving on the municipal facilities advisory committee.
Yes.
That is an optional one. It's not warranted by law. But I think that the continuity from the very beginning to now and your experience as a construction manager would make you. Well, I think it makes you valuable for that group. Personally, would like to see you continue.
I'd like to continue on that group.
And with that in mind, I would suggest, I encourage you not to take on too much.
No, I agree. I agree, but I'm also quite insane.
Well, and you retired, right?
I am.
And you can tell John all about being retired.
If you want to give up CIP.
I would, I would give you CIP. I don't mind. I think that makes.
I would, because I thoroughly enjoy the flow, quite honestly, of CIP, which leads into budget, which comes back to the this group here.
And if I if I could make a suggestion regarding planning, I think it's sort of important that Eric stick to planning because they're still in a.
I'm actually.
Did it last year.
So I was wondering.
And that's why I said it out loud. I have a strong, I was on planning prior to joining.
Right. And I was wondering if you wanted to go back to planning because I was thinking it might be an appropriate year. I mean, I don't mind either way, but.
I would like to go back to.
Okay, that would be fabulous. So Eric, okay, do you want to stay with Heritage?
I'm willing to do that unless somebody else wants to. I don't know.
I'm so I'm just gonna toss out there that Alice is already on the Village Association as an actual board member, so.
And the Johnston Property.
And you got Alice. And did Eva not make the list this year?
No, I did not.
I didn't bring my glasses. Okay, but I mean, I think we've had a strong connection to Eva, so.
So I'm willing to do Heritage as well.
Okay.
Anyone else. My only question is, is there any problem with somebody being on two land use boards?
Is Heritage?
Only if it's only in the.
Heritage is advisory, right?
Well, except that in the past, there's been a policy, right? There was a policy change to not have somebody on two land use boards.
Is Heritage Advisory? Doesn't have any teeth, does it?
It's a.
The Land use board?
Yeah.
Oh. It works for the planning board technically.
I'm happy to.
I didn't notice they worked for us.
I think.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, if Alice, are you able to?
When is it?
They like to meet in the middle of the.
It is, it is once a month on a Thursday at about at four thirty in the afternoon here.
It was, it has been the third or fourth Thursday, and they're actually meeting the third Thursday temporarily because of a meeting conflict with the Johnston Property Use Committee. But it's at four thirty in the afternoon. And once the Johnston Property Use Committee is not meeting on the fourth Thursday, they move back to the fourth Thursday, at four thirty.
Okay.
So that, yeah? No pressure.
If Ed says that'll work, then it'll work.
Can you be there at four thirty?
I want to.
Yeah, well, I mean.
This is the.
And as long as they're not meeting at the same time.
Yeah.
We pushed our Johnson property later.
Oh, yes, he wasn't meeting before.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so that was a, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And I think you should know too that it's if it changes, right, like with your work or something, you just tell us because we're a team. And we'll make it work.
Okay, I will do my absolute best.
Okay. And if you feel like you get into this and you're like, whoa, I signed up for too many meetings, you tell us and nobody's gonna judge you because we've all done it before. Okay, so down to Conservation Commission hasn't had a rep in the past. I I knew you were gonna point your finger at me. Does someone else want to do it?
We're down to optional ones.
I know, but I think it's we, we don't have a town person going to those meetings, right?
No, it was a little bit of the discussion when we went to five to be able to go to a few more.
If if no one else is strongly would like to do that, I will go to that one. Energy Committee. And in the past, I've sat in those meetings, honestly, when they invite us, I don't go to all of them, but I don't know how crucial it is to have somebody or if it's that when they invite us to go to one of their, like I sat in some of the CPCNH pieces, and I think it was helpful, but I don't know if it's crucial to go to all of them. Don't know what others think.
When are they? Those are the fourth Tuesday, fourth Tuesday at six thirty.
I can do the energy committees.
I guess my only thing on conservation is they're gonna have to stop moving around all the time because they there's moved way too much. Like the surprise meeting.
They had a few special meetings.
Okay, yeah.
That's not the norm.
No, oh, yeah, I know it's not the norm. It shouldn't be. It's not in the spirit of open meetings. Okay, Mascoma Lakeside Park. Do you guys meet anyone? You already have two staff folks there.
We have four staff folks there.
How many may be coming back?
I think, I mean, unless somebody really wants to go to a meeting, and that's not to say you can't go, right?
Not to totally go out of order, but I'll throw my hat in the ring for the Tiff District.
Yes. And can we get them to actually meet? Because that question's gonna be coming up, and we have to answer it.
They start, they had a meeting last, late last year?
Yeah, we will start.
That's interesting because I volunteered to do it last, so I don't think I got invited to that meeting. Oh, which is might be why I'm under the impression they haven't met. Old Home Days, again, optional.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Is it necessary?
I don't think it is. That's a very, like, a limited scope. Recreation Commission, you have an entire commission and Kevin. And I assume if there was something you need, unless they feel like you need a select board member there.
I think it'd be more if someone wanted to be.
Was anyone?
I don't know if it's a need, but it's.
I would do it, but there may be a conflict in that my son is on the commission. I mean, I may attend a meeting or two.
Yeah, you you picked up a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that is it unless there's something somebody sees that we have missed.
What did you say on Eva?
On Eva? Alice is already on the board of Eva, so I think unless somebody feels like you need to respond to you somehow, it'd be either just have one person. Okay, moving along, approval of the minutes, we have the minutes of March sixth, two thousand twenty-three, both regular and non-public sessions. And entertain a motion.
I move that we accept them as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion, questions, comments?
Question.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, yeah, you can abstain. And you are allowed to vote on something you aren't at, but a lot of times people do abstain. So your Alice is an abstention. All right, and then. Oh, February, do we need to unseal the minutes of February twenty-first since we sealed them for a time certain?
It wasn't as, it was kind of a vague time certain. It said after it was.
That might have been because I wrote the notes and it wasn't.
So we just wanted to make it.
Sure. Okay, I would entertain a motion to unseal the minutes of February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
So move.
Have a second?
Clarify for me that those were personnel review minutes?
So, yeah, so typically when we seal something for a time certain, it's because you need long enough to talk to the person. It's not to hide anything, right? You're sealing it because you do your business in public as a general rule. So it's so that you have the opportunity to have your conversation. In this case, I will tell you it was the town manager review. So you'll be able to see it. It's nothing, nothing big other than it wasn't even town, so it's kind of more fair for us to do his review before he reads the minutes.
Are we required to unseal it?
There's no reason not to.
You will be required at some time. You can't keep them.
I just have a personal policy about personnel reviews not being public information.
So the minutes are typically relatively limited, like they're not super detailed. It's just, you know, honestly, when we don't have, when you leave me as the minute ticker, you got notes, and then I give them to Lisa. So it's.
There is nothing in the minutes that could not be unsealed.
That. No one wants? Wait, okay, who made the motion? One of you guys has to.
I made the.
Okay, I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, abstentions.
I'm confused.
So we're unsealing the minutes, and it's a, it's a.
We had a non-public.
Yeah.
Review, performance review for town manager Ed. And we sealed those minutes so that we could talk to him about that review prior to him reading the minutes about the review. So we, so we had a conversation between the three of us without him.
Yeah.
And then we had a conversation with him, and now we're unsealing our original, the minutes from our original conversation.
Yeah, and there are very.
I just hesitate to vote on minutes that I wasn't there for.
No, it's not. You're not voting on the minutes. You're voting on the action of making them public again.
Oh, and that's.
It's completely outside. So the minutes are already approved.
Okay.
It's just making sure they're unsealed and that it's very clear since I took shoddy notes. Right? And I'll admit to it. So I think, but it's, this is something we do frequently in the sense that if we have a non-public, there's only, there's a very limited number of reasons. And I think if you go to one of, you're gonna sign up for one of the trainings already, I think. They'll talk to you about the very specific reasons. You can't just go into non-public to hide your business from the public. There you have to state the reason, and you can only have those kind of discussions. They have to have minutes, whether they get sealed or not. And honestly, it's not a great policy to do your business outside of the public eye anyways, or at least that's my personal opinion. And I think the state and the legislature would agree on that since they made all these rules. So, so we've got three yeses and.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll go, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, we are unanimous. We're good. No, and I think, thank you for asking for the clarification because these are the things that if you go to enough meetings, you get used to it after a while, but it is weird, nuanced, and yay, New Hampshire. Board reports, so. Who wants to go first for board reports? How about not me?
I have none.
I have none.
Planning Board is tomorrow. I'm gonna give you a report. And I think, are we missing any other? We went to town meeting, you guys. We're good. Ed, you're up. Under Town Managers Report.
Thank you. I'll give you, I'm gonna say a brief report again. As I normally do start with staff, I do want to let you know that the applicant that we had that was moving through the officer program, we did decide not to move forward after some of the background that we did. So we've kind of returned to square one. They're reviewing some applications and we'll be, we'll be moving through that process. And I don't want to say nothing too big about that applicant, but as you know, the police background and the rigorous testing we do there is kind of hard to get through. So we did do that, and we're gonna be looking through the new applicants and starting the review process over. With that, all other positions are still currently staffed, so just working on those two police department positions. Community Power Update, if you have not heard, CPCNH had completed their first round of power purchase and has set a kilowatt per hour rate of fifteen point eight cents. This is approximately six cents lower than our local companies, mostly Liberty, Liberty's at twenty-two percent or twenty-two cents per kilowatt hour. So they did a really good job staying under, getting, getting the power cheaper as they said they would do. They did end up setting the rate a little lower than what their goals were for some of their building reserves. They're still gonna be building reserves and building the company, but they decided to take a little bit less per kilowatt hour to make sure that it was a, it was an enticing reduction in per kilowatt hour energy.
And truly, that committee, I want to give them real kudos for a terrific effort, and this is significant savings for taxpayer.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be good, and we'll continue working forward. They're gonna be doing more power purchases this summer, so we'll, we'll be looking at that. We will be having two public information sessions, one on March twenty-eighth at six to seven P M. as part of the normal energy committee meeting. This will be recorded so we can make it available for viewing. And then April fourth at six thirty to eight o'clock P M. at the community building, they're gonna have an in-person session to answer questions. I don't have the number yet, but we also will be releasing a, a number that people can call to CPCNH to get some questions answered if needed. With that, I'll move on to the Public Safety Building in Whitney Hall. The Congressional Direct Spending Grants have been submitted. I want to thank Chief Holland for all the work that he did on that and the the great job that he's done staying in contact with Jean Sheen's staff. He's also worked with some other congressional staff, but he really did a great job selling that energy product, project, and Jean Sheen's staff has really kind of taken it under their wing, if you will. We did receive word last week that they decided not to move that one forward under the energy funding portion of the congressional spending. They found that they were, they had limited funding and they weren't funding a lot of those bills, so they, they shifted that and they put it into the USDA Community Facilities Arena because they thought it had a better chance of getting funded there. So they're continuing to push that forward, and I just, again, want to thank Chief Holland for all his hard work on that. This, that actual project, looking into the, the energy portion of that, caused us to take a little bit of a step back and reconsider some of our mechanical plans for the, the building. We also, during this, made a decision to what our contractor says is to slow down in an effort to speed up. So instead of breaking ground this summer, what we're looking at doing now is pouring the foundation in the fall, being able to order some equipment and getting contractors set up to start the vertical construction, putting walls up and stuff early next spring. Instead of trying to rush, get it done and work through the winter, we think that'll save on some winter type heating costs for construction, but it'll also allow us to move a little bit quicker when we get there in the spring. It may cause a little bit of delay in the project, but he doesn't expect it to be the full few months that we'll be delaying this, that it'll only be an, an extra month or two. So we'll, we'll keep looking at that, but it did bring delight that, I'll say R T U, but the rooftop units that we were looking at putting on the building was only a few hundred thousand dollars less expensive than heat pump type units. So we've made the, we've made the decision to move forward and looking at the, the heat pump type units, figuring out how we can get that done. So the current building we're looking at, if you remember, the Bread Loaf Building was a stick-built building with rooftop units and a pretty decent envelope. So we're, we're looking right now, again, at a, a stick-built wood build, wood, wood frame structure with a tight building envelope and good insulation, and then the heat pump unit. It moves us away from the, the net zero goal, if you will, and I think it'll still be a highly efficient building. So we're gonna be moving forward with design in that direction. I've been working with Rob Mauls and Jeff Goodrich from Pathways Engineering, looking to prepare the final surveys and start moving forward with the subdivision process for the land that we're purchasing. So that'll hopefully happen here in the near future, and the Whitney Hall R F T documents are due this Wednesday, and we look forward to, to moving forward with the design, start to, final design of the Whitney Hall project. With that, I'll move on to, New Hampshire has, now we got official word that New Hampshire, through the president, has been declared a disaster for the December twenty-second through the twenty-fifth storm. Again, Chief Holland is the Emergency Operations Director, worked with Jim Taylor, Jeremy Clay, and Phil Neely to put together extra costs that that storm caused for us moving forward, and they worked with the state, presenting a extra cost of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars that went forward as part of the state declaration. And now that it's been declared a storm by the president, we can work to submit the paperwork and fill out the FEMA paperwork for reimbursement for that money. So good job to those staff members that, that put all that data together during the storm and right after to, to make sure that we get the reimbursement that's reserved for the town of Enfield. At the last meeting, I told you the forestry skid unit would be here soon. It has arrived and has been installed. So the fire department's been spending time at the station, looking at the unit, looking where they want to mount equipment, and they're, they're getting ready to mount all the equipment for the upcoming season. So nice to, to see that it's here and we're moving forward. And then I did learn today that the Shaker Bridge. Opera House and for the next September season was we're moving forward to the Whitney Hall renovation. That's what I have for a board report. Town Manager Report.
Are there any questions with the Town Manager?
Where is the Briggs place?
It's in White River Junction.
Any questions or comments from the public that's physically here on the Town Managers Report? Any questions or comments from our folks joining us online? Moving on, we've got communications. There's an Upper Valley Lake Centipede Regional Planning Council request for a letter of support for homeowner developer utility in our packet.
I'd like you guys to just look through that and see if you would give me permission to go ahead and just fill this out and submit on behalf of the town of Enfield. One thing I would like to draw your attention to is the final bullet over there, asking for some money to support this. There was no money actually budgeted for this, but if the Black Board wanted to have a discussion, we could, we could have one. I'm sorry.
No, I would say, what are your thoughts?
I went through this and I went online to try to understand a little more, and I'm still a little bit unclear as to their mission.
I don't know the full mission. I've gotten about the same information that you do. I have been getting some of the advertising for the, the Home Creators Expo that they're putting together, where they're putting a class together for people that are looking at possibly building homes and to talk about A D Us for contractors to explain that a little bit more to some homeowners. So it's.
And I certainly support it in principle. But without further clarification, I'm not sure that we can provide financial support at this time.
I tend to agree with Tracy on that one.
Yeah, my view would be like, that this is largely a commercial endeavor in terms of the Creators Expo. And so I don't think we need to financially support it. If anything, if we thought it was a tremendous value to the town, then we should consider like asking the staff to go, which I don't think we're there. But you know, like, if we think that an event like this is gonna benefit our townspeople, educating them about our permitting process, which is valuable, that educating our direct citizens about the permitting process would be a better expenditure of our money rather than something that's really everybody in Upper Valley. And it's largely a commercial endeavor.
Alice, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
I, yeah, I think it, in theory, it sounds like something that we would support, and I just don't know if we need to support it financially.
I guess I'll add my two cents, which is I think it's pretty clear at town meeting that people have real financial concerns for their households and the homes, and since it wasn't budgeted, I think, no, we got, we have to be cognizant of what we're spending money on. So without a detailed ask and a projected outcome, I would not be comfortable. I think we are on the same page, it sounds like. So I entertain a motion minus the final bullet to authorize our town manager to sign and send this. So you wanna, no, I'm, I'm entertaining a motion. Someone's gonna make it, but you wanna, or do you want to do a rewrite?
No. Did you say, did you make motion then?
No.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to submit a letter in support of the homeowner development utility without any financial support.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Questions or comments from the public here? Questions or comments from folks online? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Hi, opposed? Pass this unanimously? Hey, Upper Valley, I'm sorry, no, I'm another line. Next line, Energy Committee Resignation Hutchins. I'd entertain a motion on the resignation.
Hi. I'd make a comment. I I think Gary is a a strong willed individual who really faithfully believes in the purposes that he tried to bring forth. I'm sorry that he wasn't able to be satisfied with the results that he was seeing. And for that reason, I won't accept his resignation.
We don't get that choice. We've done, we've had this discussion before. I've tried this.
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll disclose for those who don't know, Gary is not only my neighbor, but the godfather to my daughter. So I I think it's an excellent letter, and I appreciate getting his thoughts, but I think we have to accept his resignation with regret if someone wants to make that motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Gary's resignation with gratitude and regrets.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I mean, I think he did have an impact.
I think he did.
He just didn't get exactly what he wanted.
Yeah.
Um, it's not as though his time was wasted, his voice was heard.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
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 I guess.
It's okay, we
Fear pressure.
It happens, you know. You know, and it's okay to be disappointed. That doesn't mean we can make it. Can't make them fly again. Drop off the form at his house. I know somebody. Okay, business of the evening, we're going to do a review of town meeting led by our town manager.
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't have a lot, but I just kind of wanted to do a little bit of a debrief. I'll just pick out all three questions that or two questions to start, I guess, but really wanted to talk about what we think went well this year and what maybe could have been done better or differently, if there was any ideas.
I'd like to just share what the town attorney said to me at the end. He said, you know, I'm really impressed with how much people here seem to like each other. We really thought that the town meeting went smoothly and worked well. I agree with that. I was impressed myself.
And I had a similar conversation with him in terms of we agree, but we agree in a civil manner, and we walk away liking each other still. It's not the case in some places. So I think that's a really important, and that's a big deal, because this is somebody who goes to other towns and also serves on the board in in his own town.
I will say, as the town manager, I appreciate that, not only at town meeting, but we've had some pretty, pretty good debates in different meetings, and and people are very open to having the discussion, disagreeing with each other, and then being able to to smile and walk out together at the end of the meeting, and it's nice.
One thing I think went well, I I thought the the whole budget discussion process, while it was, it was tough, I mean, because a lot of money was at stake. I thought that went very well. It was, it was clearly presented. And I think the people understood what was going on.
Um, I think our I don't know if Lindsay is on today, if she's able to join us or not. Um, I just wanted to thank her for making sure that people got a chance to speak, because that's a really hard job. And it's really important, and we can't learn from each other unless we include people, so I think the way she did it was very helpful.
My one comment would be, and I thanked Lindsay that day because I thought she did a a really credible job. And it's tough. But my one comment is that according to the moderator rules, we don't actually have to strictly follow Robert's Rules of Order. And my thought is that when the first person to speak decides to immediately call for an amendment, I don't think it's necessary for us to disrupt the conversation of the warrant article. I believe we should be able to continue to discuss the warrant article. And we can discuss it with the amendment. I'm not questioning that the amendment deserves a vote. I'm just saying that I don't think it's necessary for us to stop the discussion of the original warrant article, discuss the amendment, and have an immediate vote on the amendment, and therefore lose the discussion, as was the case on a certain article, completely lose the discussion on the warrant article itself. There were people who spoke to me, they really wanted to speak on the warrant article, and they simply were not able to because there was an immediate amendment proposed. That is not necessary under Robert's Rules of Order, as I understand it, that you have to necessarily immediately stop what you're doing and address only the amendment.
I I got similar feedback, and I will say I'm a bit torn on it. First of all, I'm pretty well versed in Robert's rules, but and they're there for a reason, right? Because you, somebody might do it one way and do it another. So I think at least the moderator has been very consistent in this. It it was a challenge. Also, though, we have meetings all year round that are public, and so I do feel like there's adequate time for people to come and talk to us, and they are certainly invited to do so. Uh, I I get it both ways. I guess the the hard part for me is I I wrote to some of the people who felt strongly they didn't have an opportunity to speak, and they have yet to respond to me, so when I give you a personal invitation to talk to me about how you felt so I could understand it, or to come to a meeting, I would hope if you felt so strongly that you were slighted that maybe you would respond. And I mean, that's your right not to, but I think in the heat of the moment, it felt really bad for some people, but maybe now some of that subsided. I I can't speak for them because I haven't heard back. So I I I think that we should, you know, whatever we do is going to be public, and I think we'll make sure it's well published. Question. Um, Dave Bofe.
Can you hear me?
Again.
Okay. Um, as the one that proposed the amendment that Mr. Young objected to or has concerns about, um, I was just following what I understood to be the our standard operating procedures um, and was not looking to preclude discussion about that article altogether.
Um, I don't know if you want to respond at all.
No, just as a quick response, I I I was referring actually less to the amendment that Dr. Bofe proposed than the one which had reference to Methodist Hill.
Yeah.
Um, I certainly welcome the amendment. I'm simply suggesting that the order of discussion doesn't necessarily mean you have to stop what you're doing, discuss it, and vote on the amendment before you can move on to the original narrative.
I think we could have a discussion with Lindsay. We've always had a very open dialogue with our moderator, so we can talk to her and share some of the feedback we've gotten and what we think worked or didn't work as a board together with the administration to make sure that we're doing what needs to be done, that we're being consistent and we're being fair. So we can probably catch up on that another time. But she's here to have that opportunity. I guess I'd add one challenge that I had, as I found it very rude when people yelled. Um, I think all of us know when the microphone isn't working, we're not five, so we don't need to yell speaking to the microphone. Every one of us has a microphone in front of us. It only works if the lovely gentleman who's running the iPad turns it on. Um, or you can be really loud like me where you can be heard everywhere, but that's not the case for everyone, right? So I think maybe just having a conversation with the supplier who does that work for us, because I understand that people were very, but there there was no reason for that level of yelling, and so I would admonish the public to get control of their big, big emotions, because we're gonna make the microphone work. Just give the nice guy with the iPad like two more seconds. So I guess, and that was, you know, it's a minor detail, but I think some people feel they get very nervous because there have been times over the years that people have not been able to hear. I think nobody is foolish at the head table. We all know when someone can't hear us. Yeah, do you have it?
I have a question, just for context. Uh, we got ninety some votes in favor of the budget and sixty some against it. That seems like a pretty deep divide to me, and I I'd be happier if most of the people who are paying taxes, you know, like almost all would agree to it. Is that totally idealistic? And is is ninety some to sixty some typical?
Yeah.
Just unusual?
This is a typical split. So I'd say, and I'll just speak from my general experience in both the school district and here, because I I once chaired a school board. It's pretty common to have twenty to thirty percent say no. You could offer them a million dollars tax free with no repercussions, and they would still say no to you because it's a no vote. Yay. Um, and that's just how mentally some people work. So it's very, very hard to get that extra percent here. If you hit seventy, I would say you're a rock star usually. Um, sixty is standard, and usually sixty to me, and you guys can correct me on how you feel, sixty means you didn't get into a knock down, drag out fight usually. You you can walk away neighbors and friends and disagree and have a quality discussion. Also, the majority of the people in this town who are registered voters are never going to show up to town meeting. We know that beg, steal, or borrow. I tried texting them last year. Um, each article. So I think those people are abdicating their their vote, knowing that they're generally always happy with the outcome. Not always, always, but a lot of people are just like, well, it usually works fine for me, so they don't come. I'm not saying that's the way to vote, but a non-vote is still a form of voting, right? So um, right now, we are a town meeting town, and last year there was a hot discussion about whether we'd go to S B two, be a bit more inclusive. Eric's got some very good graphs showing kind of the deviation between Tuesday voters and Saturday, and but I think it is a good question on inclusion. Are you, are you gonna get more people who want, I mean, let's be honest, like paying taxes isn't very exciting. Right? So I think it's just selling, and should you as a board be selling something to people? The answer is no, it's not legal, right? We can say this is what we need and this is why, but we can't be like, rah rah, go vote yes. So there's some of that component as well. I don't know how you guys feel. Eric, you've done a lot of tracking.
Yeah, no, I think I think he summarized it well. I mean, just this year, about four hundred and five people voted on Tuesday, hundred and sixty five voted on the budget, so that's about sixty percent decrease between Tuesday and Saturday, which is very typical. Uh, and I went, I mean, I don't have it right in front of me, but I but I can show you a chart if you stick around after the meeting of the last twenty years of
I can also Tuesday versus Saturday. In our leadership Upper Valley class, we had our government day last month, and we brought our voting results from all the different towns that were represented. And our numbers are in line with everybody else.
Yep.
Interestingly enough, not everyone even who was there even voted. Uh, the count, for example, for the budget is below the number of people that had registered to vote.
I think the budget is at the beginning, so sometimes you have, I got some feedback on parking. This is like always a hot topic in Enfield. If you can't park at the front door, you don't get parking. So that being said, I think I acknowledge there's a challenge there. Maybe we say as leaders that we will park and get our bus bus up there um, to make what, like a few more parking spaces?
I will relinquish my parking.
Oh, you two downtowners. He's over there being like, I didn't take a space.
Yeah.
I am, I love you guys. I am not walking from the block even.
I'm not one.
You you bring up a good point of how do we engage voters is very important.
Yeah.
And we would take help on that because ideas, I there've been a lot of ideas over the years, short of spending a bunch of money on mailings and using more tax dollars, um, it's very hard to get people engaged. And we did send out the one kind of very basic mailing. Uh, we used to send this thing out, what was it, fifteen thousand dollars or something? That's a lot.
It was ten to twelve.
Ten or twelve. That was a lot. So I got to print it and then to mail it to every, and most folks see it and then they chuck it.
I'm an intuitive maker.
Two hundred and fifty we have leftovers.
Yes, I saw that. At the end of the day, there was still at least fifty or sixty in the box.
I had three or four people bringing up the parking thing, and I made the mistake of saying, well, you can always park at Hughes Park. And response was, well, that's a long way to walk. And I'm sitting there going, yeah, right?
And in Hanover, Laban would be super excited to get that spot. Doug, I'm gonna recognize Doug because he's in the audience that I'll run.
He's there in my front. I parked at Hughes Park. For my thought, because yeah, I may be an old geezer, but I was still going to walk that short.
Thank you.
Not a long walk. I want to echo Tracy's point that I was very interested in the Calvin Forrest vote. The fact that we didn't get to present any ideas on it bothered me as well as it did you, Tracy. And because I forget what my other point was, but thank you very much.
I I'm gonna let, are you gonna say something?
Uh, if you don't.
Yes, please. I saw your hand, but then you put it down, so I don't know if you're
Harrison, drink water. I, as a maker of that motion, I can only hope that the consolation is that there will be adequate time for many people to submit their many different points of view to a committee that is formed by the board. And I'm hoping that the net result
Dan, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I said that to Kate this morning. I, you know, I I had no problem with the amendment. I just wish it'd come fifteen minutes later. You know, so that we could have at least gotten a feel for what the response was in the room, but
Right. I think the result is exactly what
The result is exactly what should have happened. I agree. I just wish there'd been the fifteen minutes, you know, when Kim gets up and says, well, I can't talk about the forest, that I want to talk about the forest.
Good point.
Excellent. Exactly. I agree with that sentiment.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, my comment is more on the the budget forms article and um, the the amount of people that showed up for town meeting is pretty consistent. Um, I, last year I did a a graph chart on turnouts and vote in the voting record and all that stuff. And yeah, that was, that was an average, but what to me was not typical for Enfield was the budget not passing almost unanimously. Unanimously, excuse me, I didn't get the word out. Typically, it's maybe five people that say no on what budget article. This year there was ninety people. Oh, it's like that or close to that. Um, and that was an anomaly to me uh, for Enfield's budget itself.
Have we ever had somebody actively run a campaign in advance and hand out flyers? I guess I would ask that question too. I I I don't recall ever seeing such an active and budget campaign.
Yeah, I mean, it's been in town thirty years, and its budget is always just sort of like run right through. People respected the budget committee, respected your, the strike board's decision on putting the budget together. And it was it was just a small, very, very small group of people that just said no, and they probably vote no on everything. Um,
There was quite a bit of of discussion from people who said no, and it was a hot topic on the listserv.
And so
So there there was some pressure there. And but, you know, I I think at the end of the day, the fact that both the select board and the budget committee voted unanimously, because that was the budget to support, I think that made a difference.
Yeah, and that's been my experience of looking at the counts. Uh, the votes is when a committee has presented something, has a unanimous number, the public typically just votes, goes along with what they recommend.
I'm gonna call in Doug, and then I'm gonna take a couple of folks from online.
My other point. The day before voting, I submitted a letter to the listserv saying, hey, everybody, I'm running, but even if you don't vote for me, please make every effort to come out in spite of the weather. We need you to vote to help make the decisions. I don't, it got rejected by the listserv. It never went through. So I put it out there, and I never even got the confirmation thing back from the listserv author, where I would authorize, yeah, this is mine.
So I will tell you, the listserv software doesn't belong to the town, but it does have its own special animal days.
But I understand that, but I did say, hey.
Yeah, email the two moderators. I have the same problem.
Where you vote, please come out and vote. I know the weather's gonna be hard, but please make every effort. And my other comment is at the Conservation Commission, we had lengthy discussions about Methodist Hill property. But as you say, we never had any public community listening to our conversations. It was always at the very last, and we advertised the fact that we were gonna put it on the ballot well ahead of time. So I kind of think that
Yeah.
That it had been discussed before that.
I'm gonna acknowledge, um, is D B and Dave Bofe the same?
I believe so.
The two of them? Yeah, Dave.
I I don't know, I don't know how I got a clone, but it's it's me. The, I I appreciated The I I appreciated that we were able to get on the listserv. Publicity for the candidate's forum the preceding week. And of prior to the election on Tuesday and certainly we encouraged. Attendance there. I think a lot of people were the usual attendees and voters. At that, at those meetings as as they usually are. And I appreciate the the support of the town, even though it's not an official town event. So I think trying to figure out additional ways to encourage. Participation is certainly a a challenge, but a worthwhile challenge. Thank you.
I want to thank Dave for that forum that he helped organize and the folks who helped him do that. They had some. Communication issues, but aside from that, I thought it was a terrific event and and well done.
I miss most of what you guys done because of Zoom.
I know you did.
And we had the same problem the year before, so I think, and it's not, I run my laptop from there, so somebody's got to.
But there were quite a few people there and I thought it was well done.
Yeah, I got a lot of feedback on, well, I couldn't see anything and there's no recording once the Zoom goes out, but we had Madeline who was, and I'm not saying anything bad about. I want to say that Madeline kept us abreast because she was there and she remained online, so we know the connection was good. So that was at least helpful, like, hey, they're trying to get back online. So I appreciate the overall effort and I know sometimes it's just tough when you do hybrid. And it's the chance to take. I I understand it was recorded, Dave, but when the person who's running the primary portion of it. Where they're viewing you and the people speaking disappears, then those are all gone. So we don't have any of that piece. So I'm missing, we missed whole sections online of people speaking. Angus and Madeline were both on, but because they weren't the ones with the speaker, that's gone.
We're 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 working on the technical side of that for next year.
Yeah, so I mean, I I think it overall, you know, it's a risk you run, right? When you decide to opt in online, I decided I wanted to eat dinner my butt. So but I think it's it's very important to have it and I applaud the, everybody tried so hard to get the. Hybrid piece going. We are, so it's back to review of town meeting. Do we have any?
One last comment, I think, on town meeting. And that was to thank the Lioness Club, once again, for a great job of preparing some food and snacks. They worked very hard at it. And then I'll blend over to the cabbage dinner, which was also terrific.
I got a few more things.
Please, go ahead.
The other question that I had, and I just wanted to get the flex forward feeling. Do you guys, I guess, like it when I present those other foreign articles? I know the budget CIP have presentations, but I've also been other places where those are prepared and the select board presents those. Didn't know what you guys would like to do moving forward.
I think having you presented is is efficient and. Imposes a certain level of quality to the presentations. You you're used to doing it.
And you know the material really well. I'm not saying that we don't submit, but you work with it every day. So I think you can speak and you're the person we're going to turn to for facts, so. If you needed one of us to support you for some reason or pull out, then I think any of us would be learned to do it, but you know what you're doing.
But I will give you credit. I know on the support that you gave to Dimitri on his presentation and it came off quite well, I thought.
And it was very clear that he asked you, he he knew his material and you knew and were able to support them because you had worked. Tell you had a good working relationship and that's, I think, is important too for people to see.
Okay, then I had a few things that I wanted to to go over. From the meeting to give me some guidance moving forward. First, after the discussion, is there anything from the select board that would change any of the budget priorities we had going in? Or anything you guys learned from that that we should be thinking about moving forward?
The one topic which I just caught a little bit of from a member of the audience. Was perhaps to review the trust funds and see if any of them would have an applicability to the town budget. Having been a member of the budget committee, we were not privy to the trust funds, if you will. We obviously could have been. So I thought would be to look at the trust funds and see if any of them could be used to help alleviate. Some of the expenses which were put into the budget.
Is that legal? Do we do that? Or trust funds are controlled of themselves?
Well, I know what they're talking about because we as the town have. Have a property trust fund that had a little bit of money in it that could have possibly been used.
Technically, it's a capital reserve fund. I think that's where the term is.
I I I read that some of them are under the purview of the Board of Selectmen and some of them do require a public vote.
Something that might be helpful as a resource to everybody, especially where we have new members. And I honestly said to myself, gosh, I don't know if I can remember. So I'm gonna go to the school district report. Has a little section that names each trust fund, the year it was made, the balance and maybe, I think Dan can correct me, it's have a little blurb about what. I didn't and I couldn't find it on a quick flip.
So right there at the back of the cream section. You have the trustee of trust funds report that give you the balances and before that, there's the list.
Yeah, and I didn't know which section, and I started to do a flip and I was like, usually it's in here, I thought.
Who was responsible and who can release the funds?
Yeah, so hey, since we're here, you know. Is that fund that they were going to inherit?
Am I not? It's for recreation, conservation or other municipal purposes or easements.
I'm using my X-ender arms.
It's it's one of the first ones listed.
Fuel, trail.
Yeah, I think that's part of the.
Then a purchase of easements and or land for conservation, recreation or other public purposes, nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, I think part of the reason we did not use that one, we talked about it before, was we thought the purchase was going to happen right at the turn of the year. Prior to town meeting. It's been delayed through the project. With that, the second thing is. And I sent out some motions today. I'd like to get authorization to spend ARPA and CIP. So we can move forward with the purchasing of the police cruiser and the DPW truck. Would be open to doing that today.
Is that, now we can entertain a motion, right? I apologize for not dragging my bags, so. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the spending of up to fifty-two thousand dollars of town ARPA funds for the purchase of a new police cruiser. As approved at the public hearing on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And further authorize the town manager or their designate to take all actions and execute all documents as necessary.
Wait a second. Okay, discussion questions, because this is something we did previously in another meeting, so Tracy and Alice, I want you to feel comfortable saying, hey. What did you do back then? Because you won't remember, you weren't there.
This one through CIP.
And I will say the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two date was the public hearing to accept and expend ARPA funds.
Is everybody comfortable with the information they have? I, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. I think we have a second motion.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to authorize the spending of up to two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new six-wheeled cloud truck. With the money coming from ARPA funds and any remaining balance to be taken from the town's CIP fund. As approved at the public hearing on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And further authorize the town manager or their designate to take all actions and execute all documents as necessary.
Wait a second.
Just for discussion and clarification purposes, this one was written a little bit different because the DPW truck. Is going to be more than what we have left for ARPA. But this is also written in a way, so with the purchase of the ambulance and the police cruiser, whatever's left. Can be taken from ARPA and the rest will be taken from CIP. So that's why you don't have exact figures of what will be spent from the one.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And then the third point, final point. With the vote on the Methodist Hill property, this isn't something that would have to be done tonight, but. Alice can also speak to it. The Johnston Property Use Committee, I think, is working very well. That process is going good and I would recommend that we look at using a very similar process for the Methodist Hill property.
I have a note right here to bring to say exactly what you just said.
And I would like to do them kind of back to back. Let's let Johnston Property use do their thing, make your recommendation, then we can move on to the property.
The one suggestion, one I agree, I think we should take the same general methodology. But I think we should require that all, we have three land use boards. I think we should have at least one member from each land use board. On this particular one, because the land use question.
Are we going to get in that same subject if if we decide to subdivide or something in this comeback to planning board? Is that going to be an issue?
No, I mean, would the town be a developer subdividing or just be selling a lot as is to a developer?
It might be subdivided by the town.
There might be a, yeah. Like one possible outcome is that there would be a, you know, the town would do the survey and do the subdivision. That's an option.
Yeah, this is an option, but yeah.
Particularly if the town. Make sure that a piece of it was sold, but not the entire property.
I guess what I'm getting, what I'm getting at is we have, you know. Eighteen people who work on land use and we should make sure that those boards feel heard as part of this process. Because they all have significant, you know, knowledge and experience of land use within Enfield.
I I wonder if, like on Johnson Drive, though, if we, because I think we talked about this as part of the theory. Do we make sure that we're listening to those boards and going to them and make that part of the charge? Kind of like the Johnston Drive one, the neighbors were charged the charge, right? The neighbors would be part of the charge. So I mean, that's another way to look at it. I think we definitely have to include them. It's finding, and as we know, these boards have been. I'm very excited because people have signed up. It turns out if you give them an automatic form to sign up, they seem to like to volunteer. I know people sometimes are sat when they don't get picked. It's not, we're not picking you. It's that we don't have enough slots to to include everybody, but I think it's a really great way to include new ideas in town and. And really make it so it's not just us. I will say that the last time, just one of the things we did was we did not put EBITDAS on. I just want to say that out loud so that people understand because we charge the committee with listening to the EBITDAS. So and that.
Well, and we can add this for discussion in the future, but I just wanted to throw that out there as we're thinking that. I think this process is working well. I've heard a lot of compliments, not only from the EBITDAS, but other groups. I mean, the committee was put together well. We have a great group of people that really didn't have a strong opinion in any way. And I really think that's showing in the process.
I also agree with wait till June is normal because. You're not going to be able to get into that property until June. Because you go up there because of the way the McAllister Road is. Which is about five feet below the roadbed. All the water that comes down goes there. So it's going to take until June to get for to be dry enough for people because the obvious way people are going to go in there is going to be on McAllister Road.
What about that forestry truck we just bought outfitted?
If we piggyback this behind the Johnston Beach property, are we putting a timeline on the Johnston Beach property or is there one already there?
We are a little bit. It's not a firm one, but we were asking around that.
We requested six months. It was, you know, not a hard deadline, but that was the request, the requested timeframe.
When is that six months? The end of June?
I mean, yeah, for a ballpark, I mean, May, right? Yeah, I mean, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, I think when we do these things, we have to have an expectation of a work product, work product within a relatively given time period. There are extenuating circumstances. We're all adults and friendly neighbors. We can have a conversation on it. I I I think this committee has shown us that people will be able to tell us either, or if they need more time, I trust them to tell, you know, at this team.
Oh, and that's also helpful for me, not stacking multiple, multiple meetings.
Why? We haven't asked you too much else, I mean, I thought now.
I agree with that, but and Dan makes a good point about when we can get into the property in the first place anyway. I just don't want to crunch Johnston Beach so that if they if they need a little more time, we're prepared to give that to them.
There's no hard deadline, but as with everything, you have to provide some. Somewhat of a deadline or it just continues.
So you would do a solicitation of people who are interested in this new committee, for example, the same as you did before.
Yeah, and we can do that anytime. I'd wait a little bit, but we can do that anytime and then just say this committee is going to.
I'd recommend doing it right away because it would help to folks. It would help folks to know that it is on the on the desk. It is on the priority list.